Welcome, everyone, to the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs hearing on Friday, March 15th, 2024, 2:00 p.m. Here we are in Conference Room 325 at the beautiful Hawaii State Capitol. And we're also having this hearing by video conference for the purposes of hearing numerous measures. I would like to encourage those who are testifying today, if you could limit your testimony to two minutes, I'll ask you to summarize. And if you're testifying by Zoom, please keep your video off and keep your audio muted until you provide your testimony, and then afterward, again, mute your audio and turn your video off. If you have technical issues, you can use the chat function in Zoom to chat with the technical staff, and they're very competent, so they should be able to help you out. But please only use chat for technical purposes. Don't send me a message. I appreciate that. If you're disconnected, don't panic, just try to get back on, and as soon as you do, staff will let me know, and then I'll try to fit you in to provide your testimony at that time. If we have a failure of power in the building here, a network failure, and we have to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making, we'll post appropriate notice. Please, if you're testifying on Zoom, please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images. That'll kick us off YouTube, and that's a problem. Please, everyone here and online, conduct yourself with aloha, and please refrain from any sort of profanity or uncivil behavior. It's okay to disagree, but let's not be disagreeable. We're all here to help out Hawaii. Okay. Let's go to the top of the agenda. First up, we have Senate Bill 2845, Senate Draft Two, relating to firearms. This measure prohibits a person from selling ammunition to a person under the age of 21. And it prohibits a person under the age of 21 from owning, possessing, or controlling ammunition, with exceptions. First up, we have testimony from the Office of the Public Defender. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Representative--
Afternoon, take your time, there you go.
--and Representative Takayama, and members of the committee. The Deputy, the Public Defender's Office opposes this bill.
You have to tell us your, tell us your name, so we all get to know you.
Jerry Villanueva, I'm the, one of the felony supervisors at the Public Defender's Office.
Pleasure to meet you, sir, please proceed.
So, we, in addition to the written testimony, I just want to bring up that it, that what this bill does is that it will categorically ban from carrying firearms for self-defense young people when they're prevented from access to, to ammunition, and it will criminalize constitutionally protected conduct. Otherwise, we'll rest on the written testimony.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Honolulu Department of Prosecuting Attorney, National Rifle Association-- Oh, you're here. Oh, please, come on up.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, members of the committee. I'm Daniel Hugo, representing the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney. The Second Amendment does allow for the regulation of firearms. Right now, firearms possession is already restricted for persons under the age of 21. This merely extends that restriction to ammunition, which is a reasonable regulation. There's studies on the homicide and suicide risks for this particular demographic group, which are elevated. So the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney does support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have testimony from, let's see, who, next person we have on the list of folks who wanted to testify is Representative Everytown for Gun Safety, Crystal Lopilato, on Zoom. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Crystal Lopilato, and I serve as Senior Policy Counsel for Everytown for Gun Safety. I'm here speaking in support of SB 2845. As you've heard, this bill would align the age limit for purchasing ammunition with the age limit for purchasing firearms. It's a straightforward, common sense bill. This bill would generally make it illegal to sell ammunition to anyone under age 21, just like it's illegal to sell firearms to anyone under age 21. Ammunition retailers would need to check the government-issued photo ID of a buyer to confirm their age, just like other items that have age limits for purchase. The bill would also make it illegal to possess ammunition when you're too young to possess a firearm, unless you fit into specific exceptions. The bill recognizes there are certain circumstances where people under 21 might need ammunition while they're engaged in legal hunting or target shooting, and it has an exception for those situations. Again, it's a very common sense framework. The bill's really a prudent step to harmonize firearms and ammunition laws, and it's important because research shows that 18- to 20-year-olds commit gun homicides at triple the rate of adults 21 years and older. So restricting easy access to ammunition for people under 21 can help save lives if someone underage is able to obtain an illegal gun. We ask for your support on SB 2845. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you very much. We have testimony from Moms Demand Action. We've got a couple folks here. Kalae Ebbey.
Aloha, Kako. My name is Kayla Ebbey. Understandably, we are in Hawaii, as it is spelled. I stand in favor of passing SB 2845 to raise the age for ammunition purchases to 21. I am a concerned citizen and strong supporter of Everytown for Gun Safety and Moms Demand Action's mission to end and prevent gun violence in Hawaii and America. SB 2845 will ensure the age limit for ammunition purchases matches our firearms law. Restricting easy access to ammunition for people under age 21 by voting yes on SB 2845 can help save lives. Mahalo for allowing me this opportunity to testify.
Certainly, thank you, Kayla. Are you Karen Worthington? No, another person from, anyone else from Moms Demand Action? I've got a couple, yeah, please come on up, introduce yourself, and proceed.
Thank you so much. My name is April Ching. I also support SB 2845. As a citizen and mother of two teenagers, watching the numerous mass shootings, and especially school shootings, take place in our country has been extremely challenging. I'm, I'm proud of our strong gun support laws in Hawaii, and I support a law that present, prevents people under 21 from purchasing firearms. For that reason, I support SB 2845. If someone under 21 somehow obtains a gun illegally, then we should restrict easy access to ammunition. The teenagers are at the stage of life where decisions can be impulsive, and making it harder for teens to get easy access to bullets could be the difference between life and death. Please vote this bill out of committee and save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Andrew Namiki Roberts, Hawaii Firearms Coalition. Not present. Testimony from Chris Marvin, Everytown Veteran Advisory Council. Welcome, please proceed.
Uh-oh. I almost lost my, my notes. Chair Tarnas, members of the committee, I'm Chris Marvin with the Everytown Veterans Advisory Council. I'm an Army Combat Veteran. I am testifying in favor of SB 2845. I work on these issues nationally, but I live here in Hawaii. This is home. But I know that in the U.S., the leading cause of death for children and teens is now guns. That's new in the last couple of years. So this bill will save lives. Prohibitions already exist and are common on things like alcohol, tobacco, driving, voting, military service, political service. And we do that because we restrict people's ability to do those things until they are mature enough to handle the responsibility. The use of guns and ammunition requires the highest level of responsibility, something I learned in the military. There's already amendments to address the opponent's complaints about limitations on gun safety training and hunting, so, so as Crystal mentioned, those have been put in the bill. This issue is actually now about suicide, in many ways. Two-thirds of all gun deaths in the United States are suicides, and teens are especially vulnerable. The rates of suicide amongst teens is, is increasing, especially amongst teen girls. Look, we already limit tobacco products to age 21 because they cause death over decades. Guns, they kill today, so we need to get in front of this. Raising the age for ammunition sales will protect our keiki. And it's also worth noting that this actually may have an effect on the risk of, of mass shootings and school shootings. Note that 77% of the guns used in school shootings in this country were stolen from a friend or a family member, right? So the kids get their hands on those guns, and now they can legally buy ammunition. We have to get in front of that. We also need to protect our keiki from that larger scourge of gun violence. So pass this bill, and pass it in combination with SB 3196, which this committee will hear later in its original form, and close the assault rifle loophole in Hawaii as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Clayton Kubo. Not present. Next, testimony from Marcus Tanaka, on Zoom. Not present. James Wallace. Please, thank you for being here, sir. The floor is yours, please proceed.
Good evening, everyone, and my name is James Wallace, and I'm opposed to SB 2845. 20-year-old is a young adult. Last year, you guys passed a bill, HB 1, making a 14-year-old minor old enough to make an adult decision of getting an abortion. 14-years-old, 20-years-old. If a 14-year-old is mature enough to make a decision, then a 20-year-old should be able to buy ammo, right? Another bill, HB 279, going through Congress right now, a child is as young as 14-years-old is old enough to get a sex change operation without parental consent.
Mr. Wallace, you really need to focus on the contents--
Yes, that's 14-years-old, this is 20-years-old, so--
Focus on the contents of this bill.
Okay, I'm going right now. 14-year-old is a minor, 20-year-old is a young adult. Try doing some critical thinking on that, and that overall will not bring down crime. Thank you, guys, thanks for this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for your testimony. Next, testimony from Jovencio Luga. And we have testimony, in total, the testimony, 76 in support, 73 in opposition, and from individuals and organizations. So that's all who said that they wanted to testify. Is there anyone else here or on Zoom that wishes to testify on this matter? Mr. Rice on Zoom, go ahead, please.
Hello, sorry for being late. Just like to read, make testimony that this bill basically does nothing. It's already federal law for anyone under 18 to purchase ammunition, and they're required to show ID when they do. So this bill does nothing except make it a hassle for the, to, to keep unconstitutional law in force, which is the under 21, and which is already being challenged in several cases heading towards the Supreme Court. I don't have those in front of me at the moment, unfortunately. And this has been backed up with historical precedents where as young as 16-year-old were expected to show up to militia musters with their own weapons and ammunition, not government-provided munitions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rice. In the room here, please, come on up and introduce yourself.
Cameron Hurt, Common Cause Hawaii. Common Cause is one of the leading experts in democracy issues nationally. So today, we're not testifying in support or against, we're here to offer comments about the constitutionality of this bill, that indeed, we do have a very strong, robust Second Amendment that keeps our country going and makes us very unique. It is important to remember that that Second Amendment does give the government the right to a well-regulated. This committee is well within their right to see this bill through without any constitutional worries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Senate Bill 2845, SD 2. If not, questions, members? No, I just wanted to say thank you to all the testifiers. It was very educational to read everybody's testimony. So thank you for sending in testimony, and thank you for being here to provide testimony. We shared all this with all the members, even though they're not here right now. Everyone's got a copy of the testimony, so they've had a chance to read it and study it, so we, we appreciate that very much, everybody. Okay, let's move on to the next measure. Next measure is Senate Bill 23, no, 2532, Senate Draft Two, relating to crime. This measure clarifies that the secured areas pertinent to a building, including a multi-unit building, are included as dwellings for the purposes of prosecuting offenses under Chapter 708 Hawaii Revised Statutes. Allows the owner of the building, and owner of an individual unit of the building, a property manager, or an authorized representative of the condominium association to act as a complainant for the purpose of investigating and prosecuting a burglary in the first degree in a multi-unit building. On this measure, first up, we have the Attorney General. Mr. Tom, welcome, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom standing in for Deputy Attorney General Tricia Nakamatsu. In terms of this bill, the department just comments, providing some suggested amendments, specifically looking at the term dwelling. The suggested amendment is just removing clearly marked and secured a pertinent and inserting just connected. This would just avoid, to assist in clarity and to avoid any ambiguity. I'll be here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your efforts to step in her shoes. Next, we have, did the Office of the Public Defender wanted to testify on this one? Yes, please do.
And again, Jerry Villanueva from the Public Defender's Office. Chairman Tarnas and Vice Chairman Takayama, I just want to add, in addition to our written testimony, I just want to add that for a, for somebody to be convicted of a crime, one of the things is state of mind. And I believe there's a different state of mind for somebody that enters an unoccupied area such, such as a storage container or a parking lot, as opposed to somebody intentionally or knowingly entering into a, a place where people live. And so, a person should be held accountable for not only their conduct, but what they're, what they're, what they meant to do, their state of mind, and I believe that this amendment would be unconc, it will be overbroad and unfair. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your perspective. Next, we have testimony from the Honolulu Police Department. Major Lalo, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. The HPD submitted written testimony in support of this bill updating the definition of dwelling to include the secured areas of multi-unit dwellings allows law enforcement investigators to clearly identify many of these crimes as burglaries, which we feel is appropriate. I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person who said they would testify is Mr. James Nelson. Welcome, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm James Nelson in support of this measure in my individual capacity. Thank you for hearing this measure again. I know you heard it as the House bill, and you passed out a House draft. This Senate draft of the companion measure is, in its current form, substantially identical to the House draft that you passed out as a House bill. I do note that it has a clean date. The Senate draft you're looking at now has a clean date, so as someone who is in support of this bill, I think would be very much in support of the idea of you passing this measure out as is, so it could go to the floor for a final reading, and perhaps to the governor for his signature. If, on the other hand, you do wish to amend the bill, then I am perfectly okay with the language of the HD 1 as well, so if you wish to reinsert the language of the HD 1, which I actually think is a little bit more succinct than the, than the SD 2, it's a little bit less redundant. The SD 2 language has a lot of clearly going on there, so there's, you could kind of meld that into the language of your HD 1, and I think it'd be a little bit clearer. But then, of course, I would request-- course, I would request, I'm sorry, am I confusing?
No, 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 no. I was just complimenting my staff because they're so good at writing bills.
There you go. I know, I know the position they were in. I used to kind of do that as, as a job. So, yes, the HD1 would be, would be fine. If you're going to amend the bill, the, your House draft that you passed out earlier would be fine. Of course, I would suggest that you make the date a clean date, and then maybe the Senate could agree to the whole thing, and we could maybe avoid the confusion of a conference committee. I would point out with respect to, if I may, for about 30 seconds, would point out with respect to perhaps the public defender's argument against, there is a long tradition in the United States, and there actually is constitutional authority for including curtilage within the concept of burglary, trespass, search and seizure, Fourth Amendment purposes. And I actually found a quote from the United States Supreme Court supporting that, that, that House protects and privileges all its branches and appurtenance. The area around the home is intimately linked to the home, both physically and psychologically, and it is where privacy expectations are most heightened. So this really is trying to apply the concept, the common law, longstanding constitutionally protected concept of curtilage to a multi-unit building. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. That's, there's testimony as well from three individuals and also from the Honolulu Tower Apartment Owners Association. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2532? If not, questions, Vice Chair? If not, we'll move on. Thanks very much. Next measure. This is Senate Bill 3011 relating to noise. This measure makes it unlawful for any entity or agent thereof to operate a weed whacker in or within 100 feet of a residential zone except between 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM on most days. Provides exceptions for government entities and agents acting on behalf of government entities during emergencies, and it defines weed whacker. First up, we have, well, actually, we have testimony that we received from, in opposition from the Hawaii County Department of Parks and Recreation, in support from the Windward Coalition, in support from five individuals, and with comments from one individual. Is there anyone here wishing to testify on Senate Bill 3011 or on Zoom? Seeing none, and no one asked questions, so we'll move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 2240, Senate Draft 2 relating to elections. This measure requires the Office of Elections to file an application with the organization Electronic Registration Information Center by June 30, 2025, for the state to be admitted as a member of that organization. Requires the Office of Elections to share with each county the information and services made available by this organization pursuant to the state's membership agreement with the organization. Requires the Office of Elections and each county office that administers elections to use information and services made available by the organization to verify their respective voter registration rolls. First up, we have testimony from the Office of Elections.
Good afternoon, Chair. Scott Nago, Office of Elections. The office will stand on its written testimony in support, as this gives the election officials just another tool to maintain the integrity of the voter registration rolls. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony, let's see, they didn't say they'd be here, but I call them off, but testimony from the Hawaii Federation of Republican Women, Jamie Detweiler. League of Women Voters of Hawaii, Hallie Plackett. Testimony from Ralph Kushni. Please proceed on Zoom. Ralph Kushni.
Yeah, hi, my name is Ralph Kushni. I'm on the Elections Commission. The Elections Commission voted against this measure in the last Elections Commission meeting, and we encourage you to be against this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next testimony from Andy Crossland on Zoom. Please proceed.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. It looks like the rest of the committee has other prior engagements, but I'm going to be speaking today in opposition to this bill as one of your constituents here in Hawaii. So the Elections Commission, as Ralph Kushni just stated, voted to oppose implementation of this bill and passing of this bill during the last meeting on February 20. The Election Commission employs the chief elections officer, and the chief elections officer is supporting this bill contrary to the advice of the Elections Commission. And the Elections Commission employs the chief elections officer. The chief elections officer is the administrator of the Office of Elections, and the Office of Elections provides support to the Elections Commission. I don't think it's appropriate for the chief election officer to support this bill. This would, you know, as some background on this bill, this would open up voter rolls to a third party, and this may be a significant risk to identity theft and, and other issues as well. And so I would like the, the committee to consider that. And so I have a couple other comments here. We need to improve voter participation and confidence in our elections, and I don't believe that this bill is working toward that end. And as you can see on the screen here on my background, we can see that the voter registrations, this is data from the Office of Elections, are continually going up, but the voter turnout is continually going down, and it's actually reached its lowest point in Hawaii history in 2022. So I don't think we need to be spending money on this service. We need to be improving participation and confidence in our elections, and I don't believe that this accomplishes that goal. I do believe that the Chair and the committee members are reasonable, and I do urge you to vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Stephanie Maldonado. Not present. Let's see, next person that said they wanted to testify was Mary Healy. Not present. Next person, James Wallace. Next person, Corinne Solomon.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas and committee members. I am testifying in opposition to this bill. My name is Corinne Solomon. I know, Chair Tarnas, that you supported the House version of this bill a couple months ago or last month, but I wanted to point out a couple new data points since you did support that bill. The first one is what Ralph Kushni mentioned, that there was a motion passed at the February 20 Elections Commission meeting to not support the state joining Eric. The second one is, in my written testimony, if you need to refer to it, I pulled data from the state website, from the data handbook, to look at the outmigration and inmigration numbers of Hawaii residents and people moving to Hawaii, to see if they were moving to Eric states and moving from Eric states. And based on our own state data, it looks like Eric will only capture 35% of inmigration and outmigration. So the majority of moves in and out are to non-Eric member states. The third data point is, there's a relevant testimony from the Public Interest Legal Foundation, and I won't speak on their behalf, but it's in, starts on page 49 of all the testimony, and it mentions that if we were to implement Eric, it's a good idea to find a way to identify non-citizens, so that you can filter those out when Eric does send the list back of non-registered voters, because Eric focuses, they say they focus mainly on cleaning rolls, but they do a lot of work with voter registration. And I do commend the Office of Elections for trying to increase voter registration, but we need to look at how we're going to identify the non-citizens on the list that Eric sends back, so that we're not mailing out voter registration applications to non-citizens. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for testifying. Next testimony from Adriel Lamb. Not present. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2240? If not, questions, members? I do have one question. Please, Mr. Nago. From your experience, could you explain why you think that belonging to Eric would actually be helpful to the state of Hawaii, to help educate us and the members of the public that are watching?
What, what being a member of Eric does is it allows you to share information of outmigration or inmigration with states that are members of Eric. So for example, if I were to move to another state that's participating in Eric and apply for a driver's license, Eric will notify Hawaii that I did apply for a driver's license in another state, and they could start the process of removing me in Hawaii as a registered voter. So just, it's a, it's a, it's an information sharing service that is on a national level rather than just within the state.
Okay. And then the concerns that folks who are opposed to this bring up a number of things, but one of them is the risk of exposing our information to a private company. Do you think that Eric has enough safeguards in place that there would, to prevent misuse?
I believe so. You have 24 states that are already members. One of the arguments is that we wouldn't capture the outmigration and inmigration of Hawaii residents. That would be at present time. If we were to join, I mean, maybe the states that residents do migrate to would see that Hawaii is joining, so therefore it'd be beneficial if they join. It's just a, I mean, you can't see that, it's a snapshot in time right now with, with that statement. So yes, I do believe that the 24 states, there being 24 states, it is a secure system.
Okay. And then the issue about, you know, citizens versus non-citizens, how is that handled in Eric?
You know, it's, Eric doesn't automatically register you to vote. It just identifies people who are not registered. So if you do send a form to a non-citizen, they do still have to attest that they are a United States citizen, a resident of Hawaii, and at least 18 years of age, in order to register to vote. So it would be self-subscribing off with even.
It's a self-atestation that has to be done. That's the way it's currently done now?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, okay. And then, just for the public who's watching this, there might be confused. You're supporting it, but from what we understand from Mr. Kushni, there was a recent vote of the Elections Commission opposed to it. How does the Election Commission, what is their role in the Office of Elections? And if you could sort of explain how there could be a difference of opinion that way?
Okay, so the Elections Commission is responsible for hiring and firing the chief election officer, and they can advise the Office of Elections. Where the Office of Elections is responsible for the election process, so we're not going to oppose anything that will help us maintain the integrity of the voter registration rolls.
Got it. So, so in, in terms of their vote, it's really advisory to you?
Yes.
In this regard?
Correct.
And you, through your own, fulfilling your own responsibility, have to decide what would help you achieve the objectives for which you are hired to work?
Correct.
Okay. So in, in terms of trying to achieve the goals and objectives of, of the organization, that's why you're testifying, saying that you think this is a good idea, because you think that sharing of this information with Eric would actually help?
Yes. We're not going to testify, not, we're not going to testify in opposition to anything that will help us maintain the integrity of the election rules.
Yeah. Okay. So, so from the public standpoint, that's why there's a difference of opinion here?
Correct.
You can, you, you listened to the commission, but you chose not to agree with them in this particular case?
Yes. They're advised, they advise the chief election officer.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Mr. Nago.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Vice Chair? No. All right. We'll move on to the next measure. Thank you to the testifiers on Senate Bill 2240. We'll now move on to Senate Bill 2333 relating to election audits. This measure allows the chief election officer to use accurate copies of paper ballots rather than the originals when conducting a precinct audit of an electronic voting system's tally. On this measure, first up, Mr. Nago, chief election officer.
Thank you. The Office of Elections will stand in support on its written testimony. The Office of Elections supports this bill as it clarifies and updates the conduct of the audit used with modernized voting equipment and technology for elections by mail. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Common Cause Hawaii, Mr. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair. Cameron Hurt, Common Cause Hawaii. We're going to stand in support on our testimony. We did offer some recommendations, just basically wanting, highlighting the, wanting to change it from precincts to batches, to make it more efficient, and being able to actually check, not going solely to imaging, because if we just rely on imaging, we know that best practice says that it's very easy for those to, to get hacked and can be altered. So imaging and partnered with checking batches, we think would be really great to add to this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Ralph Kush, Ralph Kushni on Zoom. Please proceed, sir.
Yes, thank you. In its implementing elections by mail report, the Office of Elections acknowledges that no electronic voting system shall be used in any election unless it generates a paper ballot or voter verifiable paper audit trail that may be inspected and corrected by the voter before the vote is cast. And unless every paper ballot or voter verifiable paper audit trail is retained as the definitive record of the vote cast. H A R 3177752, electronic voting systems, Markses voting system, disposition of marks. This administrative rule allows the use of algorithms to interpret marks on a ballot. Using the vote by mail or Dropbox process does not allow voters to inspect or correct the machine interpretations of their voting choices contrary to what is presented in implementing elections by mail report, and renders any ballot image unverifiable by the voter. So if a voter sends his vote in, they cannot verify what the, how the machine is interpreting their vote. According to H A R 3177752, algorithms are authorized to be used to interpret the ballot and create a ballot image. So this takes the last piece of what a voter has produced to verify what the vote count is. If we go to ballot images, there's lots of stuff on the internet that shows that ballot images can be manipulated. Simple one is Photoshop, and it's not a good idea, and it's not going to increase voter confidence in our system. So I urge you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Andy Crossland. Please proceed.
Aloha and good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. Looks like the rest of the committee still has prior engagements. My name is Andy Crossland, and I'm going to be speaking in opposition today to this bill as one of your constituents in Hawaii. The existing law in Hawaii Revised Statute Section 1642 should remain, which requires comparing electronic tallies against original paper ballots. That, that's the entire point of this section of the law, is that in order to use an electronic voting system, you have to compare it to the original paper ballot. If you're comparing it to an image that's created electronically, that's like the fox watching the hen house. That's, that's not, that's not a real audit. And so another thing that I think is an issue here is that the purpose of an audit should be accuracy, not efficiency. However, this bill is prioritizing efficiency and not accuracy. I believe that the chief election officer is continually not in compliance with the existing laws, because he claims that, you know, because of mail-in balloting, things have changed, and then he tries to change the law instead of just being in compliance with the law, which would be the path of least resistance, to just comply with the law. And so also, to my knowledge, the chief election officer has not consulted the Elections Commission on this bill, and I do attend all the Election Commission meetings, and I think that this is very problematic. And so as I stated before, I believe that we need to improve voter participation and confidence. And as you can see on the graphic in the background here, we constantly have increasing voter registrations. At the same time as we have lower population in the state, the registrations are increasing, but there's the lowest voter turnout in history in 2022. So something's going wrong here, and people aren't really confident in our process that we're implementing here in Hawaii. And so I did want to make a comment that it is true that the Elections Commission does advise the chief election officer, but as an employee of the Elections Commission, it kind of goes to reason that if the chief election officer does not take the Elections Commission advice, then they should consider firing the chief elections officer. He doesn't just get to-
Thank you for your opinion on that one, but I'd like you to focus on the bill, and your time is up. So if you could summarize your comments, that'd be great.
No problem. I do believe that the Chair and the members are reasonable, and I believe that you're listening to all this testimony. And I do urge you to vote no for the reasons that I've mentioned and the reasons that have already been mentioned and for other testifiers. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Stephanie Maldonado. Not present. Testimony from James Wallace. Not present. Testimony from Corinne Solomon. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas and Committee members. I am testifying in opposition of Senate Bill 2333. I do not believe that a ballot image can be considered the exact same thing as a paper ballot. I think we need to audit the paper. I think it's common sense. And I also want to welcome to Hawaii Common Cause Cameron Kurt, or Cameron Hurt. Thank you, Mr. Hurt, for your testimony. I agree that we need to use paper for the audits. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony from Mary Healy. Not present. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2333? Seeing none? Questions, Vice Chair? No questions. Thanks very much. I appreciate everyone's testimony on this measure. Let's go on to the next measure. Senate Bill 2334 relating to election audits. This measure reduces the number of randomly selected precincts employing an electronic voting system that the chief election officer is required to conduct a post-election, pre-certification audit of, from 10% to 5%. It clarifies that the chief election officer must audit all elections in the randomly selected precincts as a condition of using an electronic voting system to create an electronic tally of ballots. First up, we have testimony from the chief election officer, Mr. Nago.
Scott Nago, Office of Elections. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on this measure. The Office of Elections does, currently, we're required to do a 10% audit, and we do one contest per precinct. 10% of the precincts, one contest per precinct. However, in conducting our audit, if we find the need that we need to expand the audit, we will. So basically, the purpose of an audit is to confirm the election results. If we can't confirm the election results through the audit, we will expand the audit. So we, if need be, we would do more contests in that precinct. And I'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Cameron Hurt, Common Cause Hawaii. Not present. Next, testimony from Mark Lindeman. Verified voting. Please proceed, Mr. Lindeman.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Takayama. My name is Mark Lindeman. I'm Policy and Strategy Director at Verified Voting, a national nonprofit that has worked at the intersection of technology and elections for 20 years now. My own greatest interest is in post-election audits, including risk-limiting audits. I have worked with election officials in such states as Rhode Island, Georgia, Pennsylvania, Colorado, and California to help them implement efficient, effective, observable ways to confirm that the counts can be trusted. And my interest is such that I'm joining you from New York with my wife's bemused permission. I'll briefly restate my main points from written testimony. First, it's important to check actual paper ballots, not just digital images of the ballots. Both from a technical standpoint and realistically, checking the paper is the most convincing approach. Now, Hawaii would benefit by removing the current legal requirements to audit entire precincts and instead auditing randomly selected batches of ballots that were tabulated and stored together. There are some obstacles to doing that with a hard civic and or civic system, but we believe it's feasible. And statistically speaking, what makes random testing effective is the number of distinct units you sample and check, not the size of each unit. For instance, if you were testing water quality, you would want to test small samples from many places, not enormous samples from just a few places. And finally, for now, I would suggest that Hawaii check a few contests, not all the contests. Ultimately, I think Hawaii could and should move towards Colorado's approach of auditing individual ballots, which makes it possible to efficiently check every contest on each ballot in the sample. And it may even be feasible to experiment with that approach in November. But as long as Hawaii is hand-counting entire sets of ballots, batches, or even precincts, focusing on a few contests makes the audit more accurate and more observable. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Ralph Kushner. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. I'm opposed to this. We used to be able to count full precincts in one night before the elections went to electronic voting machines. The audit should be done on a complete precinct, counting all the races. It can be done in a matter of hours. The systems that the Office of Elections has put in place are the issue, not the audits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Andy Crossland.
Hello again. Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Andy Crossland, and I'm going to be speaking once again in opposition. Some of this will sound a little bit like a broken record in comparison to the last bill that I just testified on, but it's important, and I think it needs to be stated again. And so basically, as I've shown, we have increasing voter registrations while we have lower population in the state, and then we also have the lowest voter turnout in Hawaii history. So clearly, something's not working here. And I think that by moving the requirement from a random selection of 10% of precincts to 5% of precincts is not increasing confidence, it's not increasing transparency. What it's doing, just like the last bill, is it's prioritizing efficiency, not accuracy. And as Ralph Kushner stated, we used to be able to do this with no problem. So I really think that this is, there's no valid reason for not doing this because we used to do it just fine. And so this is just another example of the chief elections officer not being in compliance with-
Sir, I asked you before not to talk about some other things that are your opinion that are not related to this bill.
I, I, I hear you, but it's not an opinion. This is, he's not in compliance with the law, but I'll leave that there for now. And so I also don't believe the chief elections officer has consulted the Elections Commission on this bill, just like the last bill, and I think that this is also problematic. And so I, I make an appeal to the Chair and the Vice Chair and the rest of the committee members, who hopefully will show up for the decision-making, to vote no on this bill. That is all. Mahalo.
Next, we have testimony from Stephanie Maldonado. Not present. Next, we have testimony from James Wallace. Not present. And from Corinne Solomon. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Committee members. My name is Corinne Solomon. I'm testifying in opposition of Senate Bill 2334. I appreciate the testimony from Mr. Lindeman from Verified Voting. That is an incredible website and wealth of information. I use it frequently. So I'm worried about this bill because by expanding the number of races and precincts, the only way to do it efficiently would be to use digital images, and I think we should be using paper ballots. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Sure. Thank you very much for testifying. Next, Mary Healy. Not present. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2334? If not, questions, Vice Chair? Nope. Thank you very much to all the testifiers. Let's move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 2687 relating to elections. This prohibits a person from distributing or entering into an agreement with another person to distribute materially deceptive media unless the media contains a disclaimer or the person is a broadcaster required to distribute the media pursuant to a federal law or rule. It establishes remedies for parties injured by the distribution of materially deceptive media. It establishes criminal penalties for distributing materially deceptive media, and it defines materially deceptive media. First up, we have testimony from the Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom, standing in again for Deputy Attorney General Tricia Nakamatsu. Your, Chair, we are just commenting on Senate Bill 2687 with suggested amendments. There are a number of amendments that across this bill that we specified in our testimony. I won't just read through it, but it spans from at least a criminal state of mind in the criminal offense, parts of disclaimers, and civil injunctive relief as penalties, as well as definitions. I will be here for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony from the Office of the Public Defender.
Good afternoon. Representative Tarnas and Vice Chair Representative Takayama, Jerry Villanueva, Public Defender's Office. We did submit written testimony opposing this bill, and the big concern we have is that individuals speaking up either through the media or other, or other, other means criticizing candidates running for office, they stand at the risk of criminal prosecution, which then could restrict or suppress any comments during, about the candidates running for office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from the Campaign Spending Commission. Mr. Cam, welcome. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama. The Senate side amended this bill to apply the definition of advertising to deceptive media. So in addition to the disclaimer that's in the bill, this disclaimer in 11 that's 391 will also apply. So they're going to have to disclose who paid for the deceptive media. We have one suggestion to make an amendment to allow the commission to apply the commission's own civil remedies as well as referral for prosecution in subpart I. If we don't do that, then someone might argue, well, you're just limited to the remedies contained within this particular section. So we would like to have the ability to use subpart I to assess fines as well as make referrals for prosecution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony from Charter Communications, Rebecca Lieberman.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. Really quickly, I just want to highlight a few points from our testimony. Charter Spectrum understands the intent of the bill, but we have significant concerns on the burden of compliance that disproportionately falls on platforms like our cable network. The bill already recognizes that broadcasters should not be held liable for distributing certain advertisements, and cable operators and streaming services are subject to the same concerns and federal laws as broadcasters. So we respectfully suggested a few amendments that the same consideration be applied to all similarly situated carriers of ads, including cable operators and streaming services, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We, I see that we received testimony from Ralph Kushner. Ralph, do you want to submit, you want to provide oral testimony as well on Zoom? Mr. Kushner?
I don't really have a comment on this, except that it seems like it's going to be hard to judge or regulate this. Thank you.
Okay, certainly. And I see we've also received testimony from Andrew Crossland. Mr. Crossland, did you want to provide oral testimony?
No.
Okay. Next, we have testimony from Stephanie Maldonado. Not present. And testimony from Mary Healy. Not present. Corinne Solomon, I see you've submitted testimony. Did you want to provide oral testimony?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2687? If not, question, Vice Chair? Yeah, Mr. Cam, could I ask a question? The Senate added language to authorize a commissioner of the Campaign Spending Commission to maintain a cause of action. Would it be more appropriate to authorize the Campaign Spending Commission to maintain the action rather than a commissioner?
That probably would be more appropriate since they act upon majority vote.
Okay. And then furthermore, should language be added to the list of governmental persons to clarify that the commissioner is not awarded reasonable attorneys' fees and costs based upon the assumption that the commissioner or commission would be represented by a state attorney?
Yeah, so I think the fees and costs are only if it's a depicted individual that is filing the action. I don't think it applies to the government agencies.
Okay. So you don't think any clarification language is needed?
I, you know, if it's not in there, then maybe you should put-
Okay. I'll keep that in mind as we go to decision-making. Thank you. Appreciate your answering those questions, Mr. Cam. Okay. Any question, any other question, Vice Chair? Okay, let's move on. Thank you to the testifiers. Next bill, Senate Bill 2385, Senate Draft 1, proposing an amendment to Article 6, Section 3 of the Hawaii Constitution to place procedural restrictions on the timing of judicial appointments and confirmations. On this measure, first up, we have testimony from the judiciary and also testimony from the Judicial Selection Commission. Neither of whom are here. That's it. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2385? If not, no one to ask questions of, so we'll move on. Senate Bill 2927, proposing an amendment to Article 6, Section 3 of the Hawaii Constitution to make the Senate confirmation process for judicial appointments more uniform. Has anyone wished to testify in this measure? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Senate Bill 3008, proposing amendments to Article 7, Sections 12 and 13 of the Hawaii Constitution to expressly provide that the legislature may authorize the counties to issue tax increment bonds and to exclude tax increment bonds from determinations of the funded debt of the counties. On this measure, we have testimony, testimony from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, Harrison Roof for OPSD. We stand on our testimony in strong support, and I would just add two things. One, this is very similar to, similar bill that the administration proposed. The Senate proposed this version, and we also strongly support this. And at the last meeting of Senate Committee, they reconciled a couple of things where minor differences with our bill. So we stand in support of this one. The second thing is, I know how much in prior testimony you have said you think it's really important that we provide plain English translations of everything we do. So if you haven't had a chance to read the 120-page infrastructure strategy, we did provide in our testimony the six-page plain English handout.
You're so good, Harrison.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Next, we have testimony from Tommy Amachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Please proceed, sir.
Good afternoon.
Or his representative, sorry.
No problem. Thank you. This is Jade McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We submitted some comments on the measure. The proposed measure that would allow counties to issue tax increment bonds and utilize the concept of tax increment financing as another means of financing capital improvements does bring into question the wisdom of writing such an exception into the constitutional debt limit safeguards that is supposed to be paid back by increasing property values from development that has yet to occur. If the development does not deliver as advertised, the government is still on the hook to repay the bonds, which means that all of us as taxpayers will be paying for this as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Evan Oi, N A I O P, Hawaii Chapter. Not present. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 3008? If not, questions, Vice Chair? Nope. Thanks very much to all the testifiers. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 2983 relating to solicitation of funds from the public. This regulates charitable fundraising platforms and activities of platform charities during declared federal disasters. Includes provisions relating to the misuse of funds, imposes vicarious liability upon a platform charity for a charitable fundraising platform's misuse of funds, and vice versa. It exempts national disaster charitable organizations from its provisions. First up, we have the Attorney General. Welcome. Please proceed.
Sorry, kind of short. Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Takayama. Kristi Chang from the Department of the Attorney General. The Attorney General supports the int- The Attorney General supports the intent of this bill. However, it poses it as written, because we can't implement it as drafted. Specifically, this bill utilizes terminology that is not defined in our statute. It exempts written consent from a charity under certain circumstances, which is expressly prohibited by our statute. Three, requires the registration of charity platforms without providing funding and additional time for the department to secure a new vendor contract through the procurement process. And four, doesn't provide additional funding for the department to increase staffing to implement and enforce. We respectively request that the committee consider our recommendations in order to align this bill with our current statute and remove some of the language that is prohibited under our statute. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Certainly. And since you're the only testifier, could I ask you to briefly summarize for the public the changes that you're recommending?
Yes, Chair. The changes that we're recommending, basically what we would like to see have happen is that we recognize that this bill is an important bill, but it's limited only to emergency situations, and we would like to see that to be expanded across the board. And so what our testimony does is go line by line throughout the statute to make sure that there's consistency with this bill with various sections of our statute and to remove that emergency portion.
Okay.
So it's pretty long, but it's really just sort of cross-referencing throughout the statute to make it consistent.
That's why I asked you to summarize it.
Yes. Thank you.
Because I think the public is interested, but they probably didn't read through all of that.
Yes, it is long, so thank you for this opportunity.
Certainly. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify in Senate Bill 2983? If not, questions, members? Nope, we're all set. Thank you. That was very well explained. I think we're all set. Okay, moving on to the last measure on our agenda today, Senate Bill 2693, relating to states of emergency. This measure establishes the offense of charitable fraud during a state of emergency, provides that a person commits charitable fraud during a state of emergency if that person, during a state of emergency proclaimed by the governor, performs certain deceptive acts or practices in connection with the solicitation of a contribution to assist persons affected by a disaster or emergency. First up, we have the Honolulu Police Department, Captain Chang. Please proceed, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Acting Captain Christian Trent. I'm actually sitting in for Captain Chang today, who's away on vacation. The HPD supports Senate Bill 2693, Senate Draft Two, relating to states of emergency, and we stand by our written testimony. Charitable fraud during a state of emergency can cause irreversible impacts to the victim and their community during a time of crisis. The proposed measure will serve as a deterrent to such action. This measure will strengthen the HPD's ability to combat fraudulent schemes during a state of emergency. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'll be here to answer any questions if able.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you standing in for Captain Chang.
Sure thing. Thank you.
We've received testimony from Natalie Iwasa and Jackie Hester. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, Senate Bill 2693? If not, questions, members? No questions? Thank you very much to all the testifiers on this measure. We are going to take a brief recess while we assemble members for our decision making. So a brief recess. We are reconvening the hearing of the Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Friday, March 15th. It is now 3:05 here in Conference Room 325 here at the State Capitol, and we are reconvening our 2:00 PM agenda in order to have decision making on these measures. For Senate Bill 2845, Senate Draft Two, my recommendation is to move this out with technical amendments and defect the effective date to year 3000. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on Senate Bill 2845, S.D. Two with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Evelyn?
Aye.
Representative Ganadin?
Aye.
Representative Holt?
Aye.
Representative Ichiyama excused. Representative Iligan?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
No vote.
No vote for Representative Kong. Representative Miyake excused. Representative Souza excused. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next measure. Senate Bill 2532. One moment. Yeah, Senate Bill 2532, Senate Draft Two. My recommendation is to move it out with some amendments. I'd like to accept the Attorney General's amendments, and I would like to make sure that we track the amendments we made in House Bill 2311, H.D. One. So basically, use the language in House Bill 2311, H.D. One, with any additional changes from today's Attorney General's testimony and the amendments recommended in there. And I want to make sure the effective date is defected to the year 3000. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 2532, S.D. One with amendments, noting the excused absences of Representative Ichiyama, Miyake, and Souza. Any members voting with reservations or no? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, Senate Bill 3011. I recommend that we move this out and change the effective date to the year 3000 for continued discussion. I recognize there's still some concerns about this from government entities, but we'll have a defective effective date, so we'll take it to conference so that we could make changes if we need to with that. Questions or concerns, members? Not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on Senate Bill 3011, S.D. Two with amendments. Any reservations or no's?
Reservations.
Reservations for Representative Holt?
Reservations.
And reservations for Representative Kong. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next bill, Senate Bill 2240, Senate Draft Two. I'd like to move this out with amendments. I listened to and read and heard the concerns that testifiers had about Eric. I am active with a national bipartisan elections committee that's part of the National Conference of State Legislatures, and from the experience of numerous states, of red states and blue states, that they are very clear and consistent that being part of Eric is useful, and Eric does have sufficient safeguards to protect confidential information, and that it's another way of ensuring the integrity of the voter rolls in their states. I recognize that Eric has become very much a political football, and I regret that that's the case, but I did listen carefully to the testimonies, so I'm not ignoring it, but I'm being discerning based on the additional research that I've done and consultation with other states as well. So with that in mind, I am recommending that we move forward, Senate Bill 2240, Senate Draft Two, with amendments. I'd like to codify Section Five of the bill into Hawaii revised statutes. Since this will be an ongoing requirement, I would like to include the funding request in the Campaign Spending Commission that they have in their testimony in our standing committee report and defect the effective date to the year 3000. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 2240, S.D. Two with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Reservations for Representative Kong. Your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, Senate Bill 2333. I also have listened to the testimony that had expressed concerns about this, also testimony from the Chief Election Officer in support of this. I recognize there is not consensus here. And again, based on my experience on this national bipartisan elections committee, I think this is a useful step to ensure that we can have effective and efficient audits of an electronic voting system's tally. So I recommend we move this out with technical amendments, and I'd like to defect the effective date to year 3000. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 2333 with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, 2334. On this measure, based on the testimonies received from individuals, as well as the Chief Elections Officer, I'm concerned and skeptical about this, so I recommend we defer this measure. Questions or concerns, members? If not, thank you. We'll move on. Senate Bill 2687, Senate Draft One. On this measure, I would like to recommend we move this out with amendments. Page Two, Line 14, I want to change what says reasonably knows and change that to reasonably should know. On Page Five, Line 18, you know, I want to change where it speaks to a commissioner maintaining cause of action and change that to be the Campaign Spending Commission itself. So I think it's better to have the Campaign Spending Commission make the decision to do that. I'd like to also amend the language that there would not be an award of reasonable attorney's fees and costs if the action is taken by the commission or a commissioner who is represented by a state attorney. I would like to also incorporate the Campaign Spending Commission's amendment that they suggested regarding Subpart I, regarding fines, and so that they can also utilize their fines and referrals. I would like to incorporate the Attorney General's amendments and also Spectrum's amendments in their testimony. In addition, some technical amendments and defecting the effective date to year 3000. That's my recommendation. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 2687, S.D. One with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, Senate Bill 2385. On this measure, I have consulted with, since this is a matter that really affects the Senate, who does the advising consent on judicial appointments and confirmations, and this is a bill that was proposed by the Senate, I consulted with our counterparts in the Senate Judiciary Committee, and I also consulted with the judiciary, read the judiciary's testimony and the Judicial Selection Commission's testimony. I would like to make some amendments to this. On Page One, Lines 13 and 15 amended, so it will read that provided that the Judicial Selection Commission shall not present a list of nominees to the governor between August 1st and November 30th. On Page Two, Lines One and Two, delete the words, quote, "And the position shall remain vacant until after November 30th, when the governor may be presented with a list of nominees." Page Two, Lines Nine to 16, delete the words, quote, "Provided that during each interim between regular sessions of the legislature, the Senate shall be called into no more than two special sessions to consent to any judicial appointments, and any subsequent appointments during that interim shall be held until the start of the next regular session. When the Senate may consent to the appointment or appointments within 30 days of the date the regular session convenes." So we're going to delete those words. Page Three, Lines Six to Nine, amended, so it will read, "Provided that the Judicial Selection Commission shall not present a list of nominees to the governor between August 1st and November 30th." Page Three, Lines Nine to 11, delete the words, quote, "And the position shall remain vacant until after November 30th, when the governor may be presented with a list of nominees," end quote. And finally, Page Three, Lines 17 to 21, and Page Four, Lines One to Three, deleting the words, quote, "Provided that during each interim between regular sessions of the legislature, the Senate shall be called into no more than two special sessions to consent to any judicial appointments, and any subsequent appointments during that interim shall be held until the start of the next regular session. When the Senate may consent to the appointment or appointments within 30 days of the date the regular session convenes." And make some technical amendments and defect the effective date to the year 3000. Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you to staff for reminding me. I also want to, in addition to technical amendments, I'd like to amend the ballot question a little bit to make, to provide more detailed information to the voters, such as including the language from the bill description in the question, because we want to make sure that the constitutional amendment ballot question is very clear to the voters, because that was something that Supreme Court admonished us about in the past. So those are my recommendations. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 2385, S.D. One with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 2927, Senate Draft One, proposing an amendment to Article Six, Section Three of the Hawaii Constitution to make the Senate confirmation process for judicial appointments more uniform. I would only like to make technical amendments and, again, amend the ballot question to provide more detailed information to voters, and we may use, similar to Senate Bill 1074, H.D. One from 2023. And then I'd like to defect the effective date to year 3000. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 2927, S.D. One with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 3008, 3008, Senate Draft Two, proposing amendments to Article Seven, Sections Twelve and Thirteen of the Hawaii Constitution to expressly provide that the legislature may authorize the counties to issue tax increment bonds and to exclude tax increment bonds from determinations of the funded debt of the counties. I'd like to make technical amendments and defect the effective date to year 3000. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 3008, S.D. Two with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 2983, Senate Draft Two, relating to solicitation of funds from the public. I would like to adopt the Attorney General's amendments and make some technical amendments and defect the effective date to year 3000. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 2983, S.D. Two with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Final measure, Senate Bill 2693, Senate Draft Two. I'd like to make some technical amendments, defect the effective date to year 3000, and I'd like to delete the language on Page Two, Lines Three to 13. I think that language is unnecessary, and so we can delete that language there. Any questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on S.B. 2693, S.D. Two with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. There be no further business before this committee. We are adjourned.